I'd like to call to order the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners meeting for December 17, 2013. Invite you to stand if you wish. Commissioner Melinda Hill will lead us in our invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together. We ask you to help remind each of us the true meaning of this season. Allow all of us to remember that. We also thank you for the organization we are going to recognize tonight and the services they provide to our community, our state, and our nation. We also thank you for the young men we will recognize tonight. We praise you for their individual accomplishments and their team accomplishments because we know it's because of you they are the young men that they are. Lead, guide, and direct us as we conduct the City of Bowling Green's business. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Aller, please call a roll.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. We're going to take a couple of minutes to do something that we've kind of got in the habit of doing, haven't we? Coach Kevin Wallace is bringing in the seniors from the 2013 Purples football team, state champions again, three-peat. Guys, thank you so much for being here. We're so excited that you've chosen to join us tonight and for Robyn's consideration here, Purple Rain and some kind of special. I thank a whole lot of you. This is a great article for you all. But we get a chance as the City of Bowling Green to honor people who have a special accomplishment. And I don't know of anybody that deserves it any more than you do and Coach Wallace. And if you'll permit me, on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners, I get to issue this proclamation whereas -- I'm sorry. Yeah, come on up here, Kevin. Whereas the Bowling Green High School Football Team maintained a perfect 14-0 winning season for 2013, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Football Team won their third consecutive Kentucky 5A football championship game in the Commonwealth Gridiron Bowl, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Football Team won the championships game by a score of 49 to 14, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Football Team and their coaching staff, led by head coach Kevin Wallace, has dominated high school football in 2013 and 2012 and 2011, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Purple fans are the greatest fans in Kentucky, now therefore we, as the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners of the City of Bowling Green, do hereby proclaim 2013 is the season of Bowling Green Purples football in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and acknowledge this outstanding accomplishment in the area of high school athletics and encourage everyone to congratulate all the members of the team and the coaching staff. Congratulations, Coach. One more time. That's good.
I appreciate y'all having us, and it's been an awesome experience to work with these young men. I'd like to acknowledge Coach Junior Hayes, who's in the back, one of our other staff members, and a lot of our seniors have showed up -- oh, that's fine. A lot of our seniors have showed up tonight. We have a few young men that are involved in playing high school basketball already in another sport this evening, but these guys have done a great job representing not only our football program, but our community and obviously our school. And I'm proud of these guys for not just the great athletes they are, but they're outstanding people, and they're going to be missed such a great way by our school and our football program, but we look forward to going back to work in January and see if we can get back in here next December.
We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's something no other city in Kentucky gets to do three times in a row. Okay. Melinda, you going to do the next one?
I am.
All right, go right ahead. Commissioner Hill has an award for us.
Okay. Lily and Joe Wheat of Tracks Running. And we have Stacy Funk, chapter president of National Multiple Sclerosis Society. And if you all, Joe and Lily, introduce who you have with you, please.
This is Pat and Crystal, who are very involved with Amerifind. Of course, Ryan Reed, he takes care of BG 26.2 stuff. And this is Jerika, this is Stacy of the National MS Society. This after, this tonight, in conjunction with the city, because we thank all of you guys, it wouldn't be possible without you guys to do this, especially Doug Hawkins, who I saw Doug a few minutes ago. All you guys were awesome. If you worked for all of you guys, we certainly couldn't do this, but we wanted to give you this check for $12,000.
Thank you. Fairness.
To go battle in this.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to especially thank Joe and Lily Wheat. We have a small token of our appreciation and recognition for your commitment to help us have a world free of MS. So as many of you all know, it affects lots of people in the state of Kentucky. Over 10,000 folks have been diagnosed, and it's a complicated disease, and we're putting a lot of money towards research to eradicate it. So we're $12,000 closer to eradicating the disease. So thank you so much, Wheat.
Me personally, is that my, a lot of this stems from my sister Susan Reher, who died at the age of 48 from MS. And we've got a little something for you guys that actually has the official medal and one of the two remaining bibs that we have, because we had double the entries from last year, which we expect to even quadruple this next year. I have a thousand on mine, in mind for next year. But anyway, this is a little bit for you guys.
Thanks.
And Lily and Joe, on behalf of the City of Bowling Green, we would like to thank you all for making a commitment to Bowling Green and putting this fine race together for our community and all of your staff and all the volunteers. Thank you, because this would not have been possible without your all's future, looking into the future and bringing it to Bowling Green. So thank you very much.
All right. Are there any other awards or recognitions that we've missed?
No, I have none.
Okay. Do you have any comments tonight for us?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. There'll be a need for an executive session. Katie will read the reasons.
Pursuant to KRS 61810B for deliberations on the future acquisition of real property by the city, but only when publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired for public use. Pursuant to KRS 61810C for discussions on proposed litigation on behalf of the city, and KRS 61810K, meetings which state law specifically require to be conducted in privacy.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Any other comments?
No, I don't, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Approval of minutes for the December 3 regular meeting, 2013.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Is there any discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. This is a point in our agenda that we allow members of the public to make comments on an item that are not listed on our agenda. Does anyone that has a comment to bring to the City Commission's attention? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the second reading of ordinance BG 201344.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.4554 acre from RM2 two-family residential to RM3 multifamily residential located at 1,700 Small House Road, presently owned by East Side Church of Christ.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Denny. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2013 203.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Kathleen Edwards and E. Paige Stansel to the position of communications dispatcher in the police department.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Mr. FIBO.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two openings in our communication dispatch function. We have an eligibility list, and from that list we take and fill positions that are open. Tonight, we're asking you to approve Kathleen Edwards. Ms. Edwards is, has already been a dispatcher in Campbellsville, so it's nice to have the experience, as well as Paige Stansel, who has also experienced AMT and volunteer firefighting. Michael, are they here? Maybe they want to stand. Congratulations.
Any discussion on our motion?
I'm a little concerned about that one from Alvin, but I don't know.
All right. Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Congratulations. Municipal Order 2013 204.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Chris D. Crowe to the position of fleet manager in the Public Works Department.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. FIBO.
We have a vacant, we had a vacancy in this position when Barry Harris left the city employment. We went out to public advertising, and we had 35 applicants from that process. We were able to distill down to who we feel is the best for this position. That would be Chris Crowe. He has a BA from WKU, 20 years' experience in various car and service center, as well as experience with Fort Wayne Supply. I believe Mr. Crowe is here.
Mr. Crowe is here. Please stand so that we can get the camera on you. Congratulations. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2013 205.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 201409 for police vehicles from Sam Swope Auto Group of Louisville, Kentucky, in the total amount of $289,633.80.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Denny. Mr. FIBO.
One of the most important procurements that we do every so often is the purchase of patrol vehicles for the police department. As we all can imagine, a police officer is in his patrol car for a number of hours providing service, and the design and specs of that vehicle are very important. We had a ad hoc committee of patrol officers, as well as our own fleet personnel, look at the needs. We felt that we needed a rear-wheel drive. That put it into options. We felt that the charger, they felt that the charger platform was the best. We went out to public procurement. We had four bidders, two of which provided bids, two submitted no bids. In other words, they wanted to acknowledge the bid process but didn't choose to bid. Were recommending that we purchase 12 vehicles at a cost of approximately $24,136 from Sam Swope Auto Group of Louisville. Chief Hawkins is here. If you have any questions about the patrol vehicle committee, Kate can talk about the procurement process, and Jeff Lashley is here to supplement anything that he might not know.
Mr. Denny?
Just a couple of questions, and I think some of us, all of us asked this when we went through this process of developing our bid list. I'm going to ask again. A lot or several of these individuals that are listed on this bid, as an example, are not necessarily in the car business, automobile business.
Correct.
Are we, or do we feel that legally we have to put individuals that are not in the automobile business on the bid list when there's only automobile?
The bid list is made up of any company or business that decides to download the specifications of the bid, and so it's a document that's created within our system. So anyone who has downloaded those bid specifications, their name appears on that list. It isn't necessarily all of the businesses that the city contacted to let them know of the bid process, but because it is on the Internet and available for anyone to see and download, once they've created an account in our system, then we do recognize the fact that they downloaded it and they are included on the list.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2013 206.
Municipal Order accepting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the period ended June 30, 2013, as prepared by the Department of Finance and audited by Mountjoy Chilton Medley LLP.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Williams. Mr. FIBO.
In 2006, the City of Bowling Green created the Internal Audit Committee and function in the city. One of its important purposes is to make a recommendation at arm's length to the commission about the selection of external auditor. Tonight, we're here to hear from the chairman of that committee, Kristy Pruitt, who's going to make a recommendation to you that's been discerned by the Internal Audit Committee. And I give you Kristy Pruitt.
Yes, thank you. I come to represent the Audit Committee in that we met on December the 9th and went through a thorough review by the auditors, Mountjoy Chilton Medley. They gave a presentation to include an unqualified opinion, which is what you would expect and what you desire in that presentation. They also discussed they had excellent cooperation from management, that there were no material misstatements, and that you can rely upon the financial statements to make qualified decisions and use those as a good decision-making tool. Any questions?
Ms. Pruitt, remind us who else on the committee, if you can recall their names. I put you on the spot.
Okay. I might have to have Deborah assist me there.
David McKellup.
David McKellup?
Why don't you come on forward, and maybe we could, Deborah can introduce herself.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. I'll help her out since.
I don't know all the last names. That's why.
To make sure we have the last names. Yes, we have a five-member board. Kristy Pruitt is serving as our chair. David McKellup is our vice chair and our other accounting professional. Then we have two business members, which we have Scott Gary and Tony Witty presently, and then we have a member from the Board of Commissioners, which is currently Commissioner Denny. So that's the five voting members of the board.
And just for the public's information, they review the audit to ensure that it's kind of an extra set of eyes outside of government to make sure that we inside of government are looking at the same things. Do you have any comments, Mr. Denny?
Well, I just want everyone to know that I read every page in the audit, and I was totally lost once I got past page one. But I am blessed and fortunate enough to have Chairwoman Pruitt, who is outstanding in my book.
Thank you.
Regardless of who she's married to. And we've got a good group of people who are interested in everything that we as a legislative body are supposed to be interested in. And I am very, very comfortable, because Deborah keeps us all in line. I mean, you can get a word in edgewise. Deborah is telling us what we can do and can't do, but both of these ladies are doing an outstanding job, in my opinion.
And I think it, thank you, Kristy. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate the opportunity to serve.
I know it's a lot of time that you put into reviewing this material, and in your job, you look at numbers all the time. Getting an extra set of eyes is very helpful. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Thanks.
May I add just one other thing?
Sure.
The people that sit on this committee, we are going to have the task, through Deborah directing us and Chairwoman Pruitt, we would have, I should say it, if we decided to do something different in the future as far as having an accounting agency with us. But these people that I work with on this committee are right on top of everything, and they know what's going on in that field, and it really is. I've learned a whole lot being there with those individuals.
Deborah?
Well, and one other thing, since we had a purchasing item on the agenda prior to, one of the things that you will see before you in probably February, we're hoping, is currently, since the contract is up after this last audit contract, there is an RFP that is out and on the city's website, and it's open and available for anyone that wants to try to bid on the next contract. So that is another task that they have before them, is to go and review those and evaluate those and make a recommendation as to who they feel would be the best external audit contractors for the next five years, so.
Thank you. If it's okay to, if I take just a moment to remind the public that we, the city has taken, I think, extraordinary steps to ensure that the finances are in proper order by adding the Office of Internal Auditor. How many cities of our size have one?
Louisville, Lexington, us, and we're happy to say Covington, based on our model, just added one.
And they have similar experience that we did seven or eight years ago, so.
Four of us now.
So we try to be very diligent in monitoring our expenditures and revenues. So thank you again for all your work. Any other comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 201346.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of a portion of Small House Road from the intersection of Cave Mill Road and Hunting Creek Drive.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Williams. Mr. FIBO.
Last year, the city completed, in collaboration with a private developer and the county, a new intersection of Small House and Cave Mill Road. Tonight, we're here to essentially abandon what used to be Small House Road and to allow that old abandoned road to go back to those who are contiguous to it and allow them to take that into their own property. So essentially, it's abandoning their old roadway on Small House Road and allowing that to go into private use. Gene, you want to add any points to that? Did I cover that okay?
I guess not. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2013 207.
Municipal Order approving a substantial amendment to the annual action plans for years 2, 4, 5, 8, and 9 of the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. FIBO.
A number of years ago, we had a neighborhood walkabout over in the College View area, and it was apparent that we needed a sidewalk there. Brent came up with a creative way to use old created community development block grounds to put together, aggregate enough funds to allow us to do that. Since we're regulated by HUD, this is essentially saying to HUD, allow us to move money from old accounts to this new purpose of the sidewalk. Brent's here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions?
Just come in, as Kevin said, just come in, Brent, for coming up with this strategy because they definitely need that sidewalk over there. Thank you.
Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2013 208.
Municipal Order authorizing the acceptance of 2004 grant fund, or sorry, 2014 grant funds from the Appalachia High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area through the Office of National Drug Control Policy in the amount of $34,000.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. FIBO.
This is essentially a pass-through from state funding to us to help pay for police time and participation in the drug task force. We're receiving $34,000 from the Appalachian High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area grant. Doug Hawkins is here, if you have any questions about how our officers participate in this program.
Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2013 209.
Municipal Order approving payment in lieu of taxes agreements related to the construction of a hotel on Campbell Lane and the construction of a hotel in Block 12 of the WKU gateway to downtown Bowling Green development area involving the City of Bowling Green, Warren County, the Bowling Green Independent School District, the Warren County School District, and Dela Sart Wellspring LLC.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Mr. FIBO.
A couple of meetings ago, staff brought, reinforced the idea that we needed to complete a pilot agreement on the hotels that we're dealing, that are using IRB. We've completed that, and we're here tonight to vote on it. It might be helpful if Gene explained the mechanics of what we're actually voting on tonight.
If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we brought to you the subdevelop agreement for the hotel on Block 12. At that time, we discussed, one of the items would be a tax in lieu of payment agreement. Warren County is issuing industrial revenue bonds to help pay for construction of that hotel. The same owner, a similar owner, and I need to address something here in a minute, I just now called something, the same owner of that one is also the owner of the one on Campbell Lane, and as part of the agreement among all the parties, Warren County has agreed to issue industrial revenue bonds for the construction of both of those hotels. As part of that, those hotels will be conveyed to Warren County, taking them off the tax rolls during a term of the bond issued. The actually then will be leased back to the hotel owners. The lease payments will be the bond payments, and once the bonds paid off, then they'll be conveyed back to the property owners, and they'll go back on the tax roll. But as part of this, to make sure particularly that school districts get their money, the owners of hotels have agreed to do pallets of payments in lieu of tax agreements to begin paying school taxes, one of them's in the city, one of them's in the county school district, throughout the term of this bond issue, even though it's actually be owned, be listed as named in Warren County. That agreement also provides that they will begin paying city and county property taxes in year 11 of this bond issued too. So the first 10 years, the city and county will not get property taxes, but will begin getting them in year 11. And what I just noticed, and I don't think it was a small thing, I may have should have picked it up earlier, I thought this agreement was with the same owner. We have different owners for the hotels, I think I just noticed. So we can amend it, or we can, I don't think it's really that big of a deal, but the one up on the hill, I think, is actually called Dela Sart Wellspring LLC. The other one is actually Wellspring Investment LLC. And I'm not sure I picked that up until just now, and I sat there looking at these things. So if you want to amend it, and we can make the necessary changes if you want to do that, but.
Let's amend it.
There are two separate owners of these hotels.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Williams, to amend that to the proper name that you mentioned.
Yes. And we'll change the, this board to reflect, we have two owners and not the same owner throughout. And I apologize, I drafted this one, I just now picked it up.
Any comments or questions about change of ownership on the amendment, and then we'll get to the regular thing. All right. Please call a roll on the amendment, which changes the name to the correct name that Mr. Harmon mentioned.
Okay. Williams.
Yes.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Now for any discussion on the regular item, Mr. Denny.
Gene, there are two, well, the hotel, both hotels will pay county taxes.
Both hotels will pay school taxes from day one. County will begin to get their property taxes the same time the city does in year 11.
Okay. Okay, the appropriation of the school taxes are just what anyone else would pay. Okay, the appropriation of the school taxes are just what anyone else would pay?
The agreement provides that the PVA will do an assessment every year, just like they do normally, for each piece of property. That assessment will then be applied to the applicable school tax or city or county tax of that year to come up with the payment in lieu of amount.
That's all I have.
Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2013-210.
Municipal Order approving lease agreement with top best-ever LLC related to the lease of 69 parking spaces in the city-owned parking lot behind Pushkin Building.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Mr. Fable?
I think as everyone knows, Mr. Ridley has taken ownership of the Pushkin Building. He's approached us about our interest in leasing 69 parking spaces behind the building to him on a five-year renewable lease. He's requesting, and we have staff have negotiated $20 a month per space for the 69 spaces. We also agreed to stripe and seal the lot, and he's going to take care of the general upkeep, sign-in, engine maintenance of the lot starting the terms of the lease. There's two renewable five-year terms in which we can negotiate a increase in the fee based on some calculation of the cost of living. Gene, you want to add any comments?
No, just the only thing is, the initial term is for five years. After that, there's options for two more five years. I did put language in, because I thought 15 years was a long time. I did put language in, at least in this draft, and I sent Mr. Ridley to look at, that after the initial five-year term, that either party, once we began one of the other terms, could give notice to the other party with a 180-day notice, which is a little bit of an amount of time to find alternate parking if we need it, because, you know, concerning, who knows, in 10 years now, the city may want to sell this, or something else may happen. Anything can happen in 15 years, which I thought was a long time to be committed. So I did put a 180-day out clause after the initial five-year term.
Did I understand that we're going to take care of the lot paving and striping as needed?
Initially, the first time.
Okay.
I agreed to that, because it needs it anyway, so might as well.
No, I agree with that too.
Polish it off before we transfer it to.
You were going to take care of it for on down the road.
As I understand, if I understand this correctly, people are already leasing these spaces. Mr. Ridley is just trying to aggregate that and make that a part of his.
Well, we do have some vacant spots, so we're talking about some of those vacant spots. Some of the others are leased by tenants in the building he's purchasing, so he can deal with those. We do have some spots that are leased by other people, but we put the language in here, it's going to be his responsibility to get them to either come under his lease, or if, we do have some options that we talked to him about, that we may be able to move some of the spaces he needs over to the other side of that parking lot that's now not used or not rented to other people too. So I think, you know, Jeff can talk about it too. I think we can, we can come up with the 69 spaces he needs.
Any other comments or questions?
And if I'm looking at this drawing, they are all directly behind the Pushkin Building. Is that our proposal?
There's a dotted line over here on the left side, and includes those, that row of spaces too, to get you to 69. See the dotted line on the left?
Yeah.
Right now, those are not dedicated to anybody, but that does, this agreement does pick those up.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? Please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And Municipal Order 2013-211.
Municipal Order authorizing use of designated funds from a new revenue source in the Job Development Fund for economic development purposes as recommended by the Bowling Green Area Chamber of Commerce and approving and authorizing execution of letter agreement with Capital Link Consultants.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Mr. Fable?
The mayor has sponsored this, and we've decided that I would explain a little bit, and he's also going to comment. There's a recent court decision that said that properties that were heretofore under an industrial lease are now subject to taxation. That impacted approximately seven properties in the city's domain, five of which are part of this agreement, because the other two are already spoken for at the trans park. Under the new ruling, this will produce approximately $73,000 in new taxation. We have been approached by the Chamber of Commerce to see if we are interested in doing two things tonight. One is to support, which the mayor is sponsoring, a MO to contribute to a five-part consortium, five-entity consortium, to essentially hire a lobbyist to advocate on behalf of the city, county, tourism, and the chamber, and the airport. Our part would be $6,000. This MO also contemplates further development by staff in the Chamber of Commerce to develop an economic development fund for some of the remaining money after the $6,000 is committed for the lobbyist to look at possibly developing special incentives that would help create new jobs. That's still a work in progress, but you would authorize us to continue our negotiations with the chamber for use of these funds. It's anticipated that the $73,000 would be capitated, that it would apply only to these five properties. It would not be an open-ended thing. Again, we're still negotiating with the chamber, but we wanted to move forward with your indulgence on hiring the lobbyist. Mayor, you want to add anything?
I do. The effort in lobbying this is a first attempt for the city. We don't participate in any other group, and we have, as has been the city's policy, we don't advocate for legislative change, supporting, you know, this legislative issue, either at state, federal, or international items that may come up. Any lobbying that we participate in will be specific for the city of Bowling Green, Warren County, the Tourism Bureau, the airport, and the chamber. Just as an example, one of the issues that they want is that the state has a airport economic development fund, which is funded through the, an extra tax on airplane fuel, and that money has been swept over into the general fund. And one of the major projects that they're going to work on is to release some of those funds to help provide the incentive for daily air service at the airport, which is a specific to Bowling Green issue. It's not, you know, we're going to advocate... I'm trying to think of something that I think we talked years ago about the Kyoto Treaty up here. We're not, it's not to advocate for big, broad items, it's something specifically for our community, and that's the purpose, and it's probably why it's only $6,000 that we're able to get from here.
Bruce?
Yes, sir.
Is this individual, if I understand it right, is going to work only for this consortium? Or the lobbyists can work for other interests?
Yes. Capital Link Consultants is one of the top three lobbying firms in Frankfurt, and we will be one of their clients. They have many clients, but they will specifically work for Bowling Green on these items and issues. I don't know very many entities that have a single lobbyist unless it's a member of their staff. We don't, you know, I think Warren County probably has a pretty good lobbyist in Mike Buchanan, but he's full-time, and I'm not, so, none of us are, I guess.
I guess my concern in answering the question is, the lobbyists or the firm representing us, we're only going to be a small part of the overall picture of their work. In other words...
Right.
Is it possible that they could be doing the same thing for Covington, Owensboro, contractually?
Yes, sir.
So they're going to be putting the city of Bowling Green in our interest with the interest of any other community, I just used Owensboro, for possibly the same thing?
I don't know who their clients particularly are. It's possible that they could represent some other entity. I can't imagine them going and lobbying on one side for Covington and the opposite side for Bowling Green, that they would be, they have very much credibility to the person they're lobbying to, or that they're contracted from.
Well, and I agree with you, but, you know, it's just a thought in my mind.
Yeah, this is an attempt. If it's unsuccessful, you know, at the end of next year, we look around at budget time, we can back out of it if we're not able to get any progress in any of these areas. Yes, ma'am?
I understand where Commissioner Denning's going with this. Do we have any way of measuring that we're getting our true $6,000 value on this?
The items that they have, is it listed in here, that they're going to particularly work on? Did you have that email?
No, we did not put that in, but essentially, Commissioner Hill, it's designed to focus on infrastructure, primarily at the trans park and the various areas where we have mutual concern, airport. We were fairly consistent that we wanted the focus to be on infrastructure.
Meredith Robinson is here from the chamber, and I know she was involved in writing the particular items that we're going to bring up.
Right. We've met as a group, and obviously we'll have continued meetings. We're working on the scope document of specifically what items are that we expect them to lobby on our behalf for, and then we're scheduling monthly phone calls, so all five parties will come together and get a monthly briefing from the company so we can track progress. Just like you, this is not something that we've typically done, but we do need a voice as Bowling Green continues to grow in Frankfurt, and, you know, none of us individually, I think, can afford a full-time person just to live in Frankfurt for us. So this is a sort of coordinated effort to market for money to come to Bowling Green from the state.
Can we say as an agency that we want you to represent our group and not other cities or counties? Is that possible?
It's not an exclusive agreement, like the mayor said, that they are one of the largest firms in the state, so they are well-known, but because of that, they get in front of the right people, and they have been quite successful for other communities. And we will be asking for very targeted things, not things that would necessarily conflict with their other clients.
And it's not like it's a recruitment effort. I mean, these people are lobbying for policies and changes and laws and things of that nature that would assist Bowling Green.
Absolutely.
But not necessarily...
Not from a broad perspective, but from an individual perspective.
Yeah, not competing Owensboro versus Bowling Green to get a certain manufacturer in.
Absolutely. No, it would not be project-related. It might be infrastructure funding, that type of thing, to support this project.
So with that in mind, they could be lobbying for two different cities or two different counties for funding, and then it is putting us against that other community if they're lobbying for both of us. Is that correct?
Yes, but in the meetings that we've had with them, related to the items that we've laid out, all the parties have laid out so far, there hasn't been anything that's been in direct conflict with anything else that they're working on, so. They're pretty broad, like the airport, like the mayor mentioned. The airport, obviously, is very important to us, trying to get air service. We're asking for a nominal amount of money for a fund that's already set aside. Additional money would be for infrastructure, again, for the trans park. As we committed when we brought you the ITA budget, we're always looking for additional funding from outside sources to help fulfill that mission as well. The county, they've got infrastructure requests as well, and since this area has sort of been underserved from a state level for projects like that, we stand a very good chance. We just need somebody who has presence there to advocate on our behalf.
I can see the firm assigning John Del over here to work exclusively out of their firm, maybe with the consortium here, including Bowling Green. But I also can see another one of their associates, or whatever the title may be, in the same office, right across from each other, and that person is working for Covington on the same areas requesting funds as his colleague over here.
Well, our contract with them is not an annual contract. We're paying monthly, every organization, all five of us will be paying monthly, and we'll have those calls, so we'll be able to track progress, and if we're not satisfied at any point, we can stop. We don't have to be locked in with them.
And we'll be able to compare what we're receiving compared to other communities that are using this service as well?
I don't know what their client list is, but we can find out who they're competing with.
Sure.
I don't have anything else right now.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Meredith. Any other comments? Please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. That's the last item on our regular agenda. Our next scheduled meeting is January 7, 2014, and I know everyone on the Board of Commissioners want to wish you a Merry Christmas. We'll be going into closed session, and we will have a vote when we come out. I'll call you later if you want me to, Robin. Thank you for tuning in. Okay, we returned from closed session to consider municipal, adding Municipal Order 2013-212 to the agenda. I've undertaken a motion to add it.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Denning. Is there any discussion on adding it to the agenda? Hearing none, please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And now consideration Municipal Order 2013-212.
Municipal Order authorizing the employment of the law firm of Cole &amp; Moore PSC and further authorizing Cole &amp; Moore PSC in conjunction with the city attorney to pursue a civil action against Downtown Redevelopment Authority Incorporated related to Circus Square Park.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Denning. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call or roll.
Williams?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And that's the last item on our agenda. Thank you for tuning in, I'm waiting up, please.